Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. Today is June 6th. Our time is 6:00 PM. We start our meetings with this call to order, followed by an invocation. Tonight's invocation is going to be led by Jake Brody from the Grace Community Church. And immediately following the invocation, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I invite you to please stand and join us for the invocation.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. New to the community, and this has just been such a wonderful welcome for our family here. And I'm the Lead Pastor at Grace Community. Let's pray. Lord, we just want to invite you here this evening, Lord. I thank you, God, that your word says, Lord, that those that have authority in any given situation, that's from you, Lord. And so I thank you, God, for this group of people in this room who care so much, Lord, about this city, about this area, who love this area. Lord, and I believe, God, that you love Oak Harbor. You love this city, and you want it to thrive, Lord, and you want it to be blessed, God. So, Lord, we ask in Jesus' name this evening, God, that you bless this meeting. You bless each person here, each participant, Lord, those that are presiding, God, and bless each council member in Jesus' name. Bless their families, God. I just pray in Jesus' name, Lord, that you would lead them, guide them, give them wisdom. And, Lord, we believe, God, that you want to pour out your blessing in this city. And so we just thank you so much, God, that we get to be a part of this tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Brody. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few council members that are not with us tonight. Counselor Omburg, Counselor Muns, and Counselor Servadis. So I would entertain a motion to excuse them. Counselor Heisen?
I move to excuse Councilmember Muns, Omburg, and Servadis.
Second.
Got a motion to excuse the three council people. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I believe we're going to have some changes to our agenda. Couple of things, it sounds like we want to add an item, and I believe our city administrator, Dr. Merriman, will talk about that briefly. And if you need a motion, let us know.
Okay. What we would like to do tonight is add one item for the Chamber of Commerce special event permit for the Fourth of July. That celebration includes authorizing consumption of alcohol in one of our parks on the Fourth of July. So we would like to have council make a motion to add that to the agenda under 9B this evening.
Okay. Entertain a motion to add that. Counselor Campbell?
I make a motion that we add the approval of a special occasion liquor license alcohol in the park of the Fourth of July by the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Got a motion by Counselor Campbell and a second by Counselor Heisen to add item number as item number 9B, the approval of special occasion liquor license alcohol in park for Fourth of July celebration by the Chamber of Commerce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we've got that one taken care of. Any other changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Did you have something else?
We do have an item to pull out the consent agenda, but maybe when we go to approve the consent agenda, we can just have a council motion to have that item removed.
Okay, okay. So I'll entertain a motion. Well, I guess we don't really need a motion to approve our agenda now as it's changed.
Correct.
Okay. So we are rapidly moving on to item number two, and I believe under presentations tonight, we do have a special presentation under honors and recognitions. And I see our Kathy Rosen, our Public Works Department head, coming to the podium. Kathy? Complete with sound effects.
It's got a binder clip on it. Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight, we're here to honor Ken Riley for 10 years of service with the city. Ken began on June 18th, 2007, as an equipment mechanic in the Public Works Department. He came to us from Oak Harbor Motors, where he worked for over 16 years as a lead technician and shop foreman. When Gene Seifert retired in January of 2011, Ken was promoted to the lead equipment mechanic for us. His duties include the responsibility for the day-to-day operations and customer services of the city's equipment shop, fleet, and other equipment. He leads, directs, and instructs the assigned employees, and usually that can -- equipment rental staff consists of Ken and another mechanic, and occasionally we might have a part-time seasonal. And that's important when I get to some statistics in a few minutes, or a few seconds, I hope. He performs troubleshooting, maintenance, and repair functions on approximately 220 vehicles and pieces of equipment in the city. So we have two people that oversee all of that, and that includes a variety of gasoline and diesel-powered vehicles, from passenger cars to the complex vector truck to the fire He also works with the various city departments on short and long-term planning so that we can get the equipment that meets their needs. His knowledge of the Equipment Rental Division responsibilities is excellent. He shows leadership skills with his knowledge of job duties, accuracy and thoroughness of work, delegation, employee performance management, and program management. He's also very good at organizing equipment and materials to accomplish the assigned tasks and has great ability to easily move from one task to another without supervision. He's been involved in the Public Works Safety Committee for over a period of several years, and he served as the chairman in 2008 and 2009. He's a valued employee, and we would like to congratulate him on his 10 years of service with the city of Oak Harbor.
Ken, would you like to say a few words and introduce your partner?
Well, this is my wife, Cindy. We've been married, let's see, this year, be 30 years.
Wow, congratulations.
And I came up here in 1984 with the Navy. So I've lived here longer than anywhere else, and I love being here and the people, the people I work with, the community we serve. It's no place I'd rather be.
That's very nice. That's great. We're going to take just a few minutes to congratulate Ken, so we're going to take a Okay, I'd like to reconvene tonight's meeting. Regular city council, we just honored an employee recognition for 10 years to Ken Riley, our lead mechanic. And I think that that takes us to our third section on the agenda, citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subject of interest, subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are properly recorded, state your name clearly into the microphone, and please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So we'll open citizen comment period at this time. Does anybody like to comment? Going once, going twice? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and it sounds like we have an item to pull. Counselor Wassinger?
Just, Dr. Merriman, do you have something first? Did you want?
No, I don't. As far as the one item we talked about, if you want to, when it comes time to pull that, pull that one off.
Okay.
Then you prove the agenda, then when we address that item, see if we can reschedule that for another date.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to pull item 4G from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. And seeing no other changes, then the other items will be approved as presented, and we'll come back to item number 4G. Would you like to bring that back?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to request to, or make a motion to add that, item 4G, ordinance number 1806, amendment to OHMC 2.02 salary commission to our July meeting, if possible.
Okay. Shouldn't take any other action besides that at this point?
No.
Okay, great. Yes, counsel.
Why? Why? Why do you want to change it?
Oh, yes. I had a question on the boundary for the salary commission members. The way that it's presented now, the requirement that a salary commissioner live in the city limits was striked, but nothing was added. So I had a question about the salary commissioners, where they could reside and be on our elected official salary commission.
Yeah, to establish some limits. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other question about consent agenda or concerns? Okay?
Mayor?
Yes.
There was a motion to postpone to a date certain, so it does need a second in action on that.
Oh, okay. So we do have a motion to postpone to a date certain. Looking for a second. So we've got a motion to move item number 4G to our July council meeting, and we'll bring it back to discuss at that time. We've got a motion by Counselor Wassinger and a second by Mayor Protim Pagau. So any other questions or input? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we are now at item number five, the mayor's comments, and I have two comments tonight. I'll try to keep them fairly brief. The month of June is Pride Month, and that'll be, that's a recognition for the entire month of June, for Pride Month for the LGBT community. Item number two is the SAR, another SAR, a couple of SAR search and rescue missions that took place this weekend. I attended the Navy League luncheon today, and they had three people from the SAR unit there as the program. And I learned that the NAS Whidby SAR team actually is responsible for over 20% of the rescue missions in the United States, which is a huge number. And it's a benefit that I think a lot of people don't realize that NAS Whidby brings. They had, this last weekend, the two rescues, one was in the Olympic Mountains, and the other one was on Mount Baker. Their program showed, you know, some of those rescues in process, and it's pretty amazing what those people do for us, so. That concludes my mayor comments, and we'll take it to city council members. Anybody got anything you'd like to? Yes, Counselor Wassinger.
More of a fun fact for today that's relevant to our community. On this date, June 6th, in the year 1939, the very first Little League game was played. Lundie Lummer defeated Lynn Cumming Derry 23 to 8.
Wow.
This comes from the Little League National website. A man named Carl Stotts hit upon the idea for an organized baseball league for the boys in his hometown of Williamsport, Pennsylvania, where the Little League World Series is played now. It was his idea to provide a wholesome program of baseball for the boys of Williamsport as a way to teach them sportsmanship and fair play and teamwork. Now Little League has become the world's largest organized youth sports program. Little League grew from three teams to nearly 200,000 teams in all 50 U.S. states and more than 80 countries. So on this date, the very first game was played, and here in North Whidby in Oak Harbor, our very last games are being played of the regular season. My daughter is playing in her final game tonight, and if we, if I stop talking, we may, I may get there for the last inning to see her finish out. But I just wanted to thank our community, the sponsors. I can read here that in that year, 1939, the sponsorship fee for one team was $30. And that sponsored a team of 30 players, paid for equipment and uniforms for an entire team. It's much different now. That may get one jersey. So our community comes together, we have business sponsors. We have our organization, Little League in North Whidby, is comprised of all volunteers from adults, volunteer umpires, coaches, board members, concession stand managers, workers. They're not paid, and they volunteer their time and energy to make our league possible. We have just about 450 children playing Little League here in Oak Harbor, many of them playing tonight, like I said, in their final game, and we're moving on to All-Stars. And I wanted to thank the city for their partnership with Little League, and I know they partner with all of our youth sports in our community to provide the fields that they play on and keep the lawn mowed and help us maintain fences and nets and dugouts in the school district as well. So thank you to our community for making that possible, and we can celebrate tonight the first date of the first Little League game in 1939. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Heisen?
Shameless plug to come out and support your local community theater. The Whidby Playhouse is opening A Few Good Men on Friday. I have it on good authority that it's a very good show. It features a couple of city employees, Oak Harbor High School students who are amazing, and lots of former military, so it's a good show. I hear good things, so we'll see you there.
Great. Are there any council members in the cast?
There might be a council member.
Might be a council member. Whoa. We've got tickets. We'll see. Anybody, anyone else? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to city administrator. Dr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of shameless items to put on my report for this evening as well. This month, the month of June, based on our new code provision, this is the month that we start our one regular meeting for the summer. Previously, that used to be the months of July and August, but now that is for June and July. So tonight is our only regular meeting, evening meeting for the month, on June 28th. We do have our workshop, and just a reminder, that does start at 2:00 now instead of 3:00 in the afternoon. Later this month, from the 19th through the 23rd, some of the council members and the mayor and myself, we will be down in Vancouver at the AWC conference. That's running from Tuesday, the 19th through Friday, the 23rd. I'll have one item a little bit later in our meeting tonight for passage. But those are just items to mark on your calendar, and for those that may be watching that don't know when our next regular meetings are. And the only other item I have for tonight, then, is Brett to give our clean water facility update.
Good evening. It's our time for our clean water facility project update. A week and a half ago, we hit a major milestone on the project. We topped out the membrane building, so basically the membrane buildings at grade all slapped out, so the project team was excited about it. So now, when you see us working, it's going to be a lot more obvious because we're going to upgrade. So this is the first of our brick walls actually made yesterday. If you look at that column behind her, that's how high the brick walls are going to be. So anyway, right now, we're getting the masons started, and that's going to be very busy for the next several months, and also very obvious. By the way, our structures are plumb. Is that trying to get that camera to work right? Recent activities in the design side, we do have 60% windjammer plans due June 23rd. I'm assuming, I promised 5:00, but we'll see. We are continuing work on our Skata software development. We are beginning the purchases of hardware and software for that. We did meet with the Arts Commission. They've established a subcommittee for this, and we've started talking about what's the potential for opportunities for art in windjammer as part of this project. It's going to be a very interesting, we hope, to bring some ideas back to city council in a workshop either in July or August. Construction, we're computer placing concrete. Seven and eight are very busy right now. The self-perform concrete remains ahead of schedule. We're picking up actually on it and below labor estimates. It's been some tough pouring, but we're staying with it. As I said, the building slabs are poured out, and we're backfilling around the structures, which has had some interesting permutations. We're continuing work on what our GMPs 911, which are mainly the mechanical and our architectural stuff that's going on. We're about 75 workers last week. We're actually up to 80 today, and we're heading, I just heard that we'll probably be looking at 105 in July. So a lot of people on the project. As I said, we're starting to buff grade masonry work. We've had some frustrations this week. We did discover additional human remains on the project. It's been kind of touch and go there for a while, but we're getting ahead of things. Basically, we've had a lot of support from DAP and from our tribal members on the MOA helping us get through this, and we're getting through it. It hasn't been very much impacted the city, but we've had to stop and start a lot for a couple of weeks, but we're pretty much going ahead now. Nothing new on the funding side. I don't know if we've heard anything from the legislature yet. On May 20th, we had Family Fun Day. This was a great event. We had over 300 people attend, 350 people attend this. Of course, a lot of the kids, it was a fun event. They seemed to have a good time. We had a beautiful day out there, and so we had a very large turnout. We started at 10:00 sharp, and people were showing up at 2:00, so it was a lot of fun. Next year, we hope to be even due, bring it into the construction side a little more and have a real plant to play with. We haven't got any major updates or distant points coming for the next couple of months. We should enjoy the summer. Hopefully, maybe we can talk about some art stuff. I haven't got a date set for that yet. Schedule-wise, we're on schedule, heading, so far, so good. One point I do want to make out is, on this schedule, we will be starting up the treatment plant in 12 months from now, a year from now. So a lot of work going on, and so we're on track to do that right now. The critical paths are going away from the structural stuff into the mechanical, electrical, and being ahead on the structural right now is paying us dividends. Public outreach, if you want to find out information about the project, you can get on our website at oakharborcleanwater.org. You can call our line at 914-7000 or call our business extensions. Email us at treatmentplant@oakharbor.org. And we do have community drop-ins. I think our next one is next Monday. With that, any questions?
Okay, any questions? Counselor Heisen?
Just a small matter of curiosity. With the weather and the Little League and people going to the beach, has congestion in that area been an issue, but are people pretty used to the layout by now?
I think people are more used to layout. We've got that, actually, we've got that sort of sign blocked off, so it actually channels people a little bit better in that intersection a little bit. So I don't know what the impression out there is, but we have the main parking lot open down there, and they can still park along the road. So in some ways, having it a little bit blocked off makes it easier on city beach, but I haven't heard any complaints. Like I say, the traffic actually going at that intersection is a little safer.
I've noticed that it does flow a little better when driving.
Yeah.
Great.
Anyone else? Yes, Mayor Protim.
Mr. Arberton, on the discovery of the human remains, I think the last time of the discovery was on City Beach Street. I'm just curious, at what location or areas were they?
I would be glad to talk about it off, but that's in our confidentiality requirements of the MOA, but, you know.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Brett. And that concludes city administrator. Okay. Before we get to items 9A and B, I'll just say that if you would like to speak on either of these items, there will be an opportunity to do that. Please, again, state your name into the microphone and keep your comments limited to three minutes, if possible. So we'll go to item number 9A, which our city administrator, Dr. Merriman, will present.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Item 9A. Item 9A is for the selection of our voting delegates. This is at the AWC conference that I spoke to previously on June 22nd. They'll have the AWC Annual Business Meeting. As part of that meeting, there are action items that member cities can vote on. As I attach to your agenda packets, we're allowed to have up to three voting delegates of either elected or appointed officials that may be in attendance. So our goal for this agenda bill tonight is to select up to three people to attend that meeting.
Counselor Campbell?
Who's going? Who's attending?
Right now, we have in attendance will be Joel Servadis, Erica, the mayor, and myself, I believe.
How about?
And Beth will be there, but I don't know, can she be a voting delegate when she's on the board? I don't think she can, so.
So I guess the mayor could be a voting delegate, and you could be a voting delegate.
I could as well, yeah.
How does the council? Counselor Campbell?
I move that we appoint the mayor, Mr. Servadis, Ms. Wassinger, as the voting crowd for AWC.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Heisen, to appoint myself, Counselor Wassinger, and Counselor Servadis as our voting delegates at the AWC Annual Business Meeting. Any other input, questions? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Merriman. Our last item of the evening is item number 9B, which was added to the agenda. And this is the approval of special occasion liquor license, and we have with us our police chief, Chief Dresker. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, thank you. I'm not going to touch the microphone. And this is kind of a last moment thing, and I think I can get through it in 30 minutes, so we'll be good to go.
30 seconds.
Okay, good. I'll talk fast. So what's in front of you with this packet is seeking approval for a special occasion liquor license to have alcohol in the park during the Fourth of July celebration, specifically Windjammer Park, and the application is made by the Chamber of Commerce. So they've applied for a special event permit and liquor license through the Liquor Control Board to provide a beer garden in Windjammer Park during the Fourth of July celebration. And per Oak Harbor Municipal Code 6.12.080, that needs to come to council for approval to allow alcohol in the park. Yes, sir.
A question, liquor and beer or just beer?
I'm sorry, beer. I believe it's a beer and beer garden.
Beer only?
Liquor, liquor control, and so it's just beer, is my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. So they intend to establish a beer garden. The hours will be of operation from 10:00 to 11:00, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on the Fourth of July, and they'll work within the confines from the Liquor Control Board. The beer garden will be enclosed and staffed as per the rules of that establishment. So the recommended action, the mayor's received the application through the Liquor Control Board. Recommended action is approval of the Chamber of Commerce's special occasion license to serve alcohol. license to serve alcohol at Windjammer Park.
So unlike item number nine A, I did not remember to open that up to public comment, so I'm gonna open them both up at this time. Anybody from the public like to, like to ask a question or, in case seeing none, we'll come back to council. Would council like to?
Mayor?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
We would like to make some suggested wording for this tonight that will be a little more specific as far as what the motion council is making tonight. The wording on there is very close, but our city attorney did notice there are some set words we want to make sure is in that motion. What we should say tonight is, motion made for the Chamber of Commerce's special event permit allowing the chamber to serve alcohol at the Windjammer Park. I could repeat that if we need that.
Questions?
I'm done, unless you have questions of me.
Counselor Heisen?
I move to approve the Chamber of Commerce's special event permit to serve alcohol at Windjammer Park.
Second.
So we have a motion by Counselor Heisen, second by Counselor Campbell, to approve the Chamber of Commerce's special occasion license to serve alcohol at Windjammer Park, and I think it reads pretty close, right? Okay. Any other input or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Chief. Nicely done, less than 30 minutes. And we are now at 6:31 in the evening.
Not quite.
And we are out of agenda items. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Counselor?
Next time we do this, we need to be faster so we can set the record.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, no further business, we are adjourned.